I don't know what we did, but I'll take credit for it. So I don't know what we did, but I totally take credit for it.
She's gonna go ahead and send that down with the firefighter, uh, trying to figure out where we're gonna go next.
Okay, Council, 5:00 PM, let's come to order and we'll begin our study session. And first order of business is beautiful business property of the month. You see, uh, Steve Colbert out there, if you can come up, Robbie.
His name is not verified though. Okay. Once again, through the beautification committee, um, we've worn in pictures here. Beautiful property of the month, Broadway Plaza, Steve Colbert. One of those other businesses that are very visible as you come up and down Broadway. We really appreciate the efforts of our, of our businesses to assist in beautifying our community. And hopefully it keeps spreading to other businesses. And we think we appreciate your efforts, um, for your business, uh, in this very visible part. And say thank you for the effort. And go ahead and hopefully sign that we have there. Okay. Any words of wisdom?
Other than, uh, we appreciate your service and your help and thank you.
Okay, very much. Okay.
Facing this way, please, thank you.
Okay, radio interoperability process. Molly.
I'm always going to go through the process of where we are. It's a, uh, another long process and we still have a ways to go. We wanted to update you where, where we are and what we're asking you to approve tonight, uh, the next step.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just wanted to provide you a quick overview of where we are in the radio interoperability process. Um, as you know, this is something that we've been working on for quite some time now. Over a year and a half, just in the current position of what we're on. Just so you know, there's a radio team comprised of city staff that has been working on this process for about the last year and a half. That team is comprised of myself, Chief Ennis, Chief Blair, Chief Hashider, Brad Dillow, and Buddy Davis. And in addition to that, we also have our consultant, Federal Engineering, that has been on board since last summer, that has been assisting us through this process. Um, go ahead. Just to provide you a little bit of background, since it has been a while since we talked about radios. Um, the city currently owns and operates both VHS simplex and duplex communication systems for fire and police. Um, however, the city wants to upgrade to an ABCO P-25 Phase 1 trunk system for both fire and police. Um, just to let you know, ABCO is the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials. And P-25 or Project 25 is a set of standards that was devised for digital radio communications. And it's used by federal, state, local agencies to allow all those people and individuals to talk to each other in events like going on right now in the state of Missouri. Um, also, finally, the city wishes to reuse as much of our current infrastructure as possible to maximize economies. Um, some of the challenges that we face with our current system, it's an analog VHF system, out of date. A lot of our equipment is at the end of its useful life. Uh, we also experience coverage issues and dead spots, particularly in building coverage with poor audio quality. Time we had some police, uh, personnel come in here and demonstrate to council some of the issues that they have with their current radio system. Um, also, the existing network does not provide adequate capacity or interoperability. So just to go back and kind of give you an overview of where we've been in this process. Um, you may recall back in February of 2016, we issued a request for qualifications for a consultant to assist us throughout this process. Um, the council authorized a contract with Federal Engineering in June of last year, and they have been assisting us throughout this process. Um, last fall, they helped us prepare a request for proposals for a new system. That's a pretty lengthy document. I, I attached it to your action report for the item that's on the agenda this evening. Um, we issued that request for proposals towards the end of October of last year. In November, we had all interested vendors come to Cape Girardeau. We took them on-site visits, we answered questions that they have, and again, kind of went through what we are looking for in terms of a new system. Um, those proposals were due back to us in January of this year. We received proposals from two vendors, Motorola Solutions and Harris. And our evaluation concluded recently, um, the team, I don't know, you've seen in my office, all the binders, those great big binders. Those are the proposals that we received from those vendors. And so it took a considerable amount of time to go through those proposals, um, really go dive deep and, and get the information that we were looking for in our questions answered. But the team has come to a conclusion and are making a recommendation to council this evening. And that's what the item on the agenda is for this evening, to ask for the council's authorization to go ahead and enter into negotiations with Motorola Solutions for a new system that will be contingent on us reaching an agreement with the state of Missouri and the Department of Public Safety regarding maintenance and upgrades and things to their system. Um, but once those are in place, we'll come back to the council for your review and approval and move forward. And if you'll go ahead to the next slide. Uh, just so you know what those next steps are, um, if the council authorizes us to start that process tonight with item number 14 on your agenda, then we will begin discussions with DPS regarding those issues I mentioned, maintenance, upgrades to the system, management of the system. We will also begin contract negotiations with Motorola. And once both of those agreements are in place, we will come back to the council. We will review those agreements with you, ask for your approval. And once that's done, then we can begin implementation and construction of the new system. So that's, that's in a nutshell what we've been doing for the last year and a half. Um, I'm not gonna get into a lot of the technical aspects of it right now because, um, really what we want right now is just recommendation, uh, excuse me, authorization from you to move forward with negotiations with Motorola. Um, and once that contract is in place, we'll come back to you and ask you for your approval at that time.
What anticipated timeline do you see coming forward with the negotiations and implementation?
I'm hopeful that, you know, that the state is eager to sit down with us, and I'm hopeful that we can knock that out within the next 30 days.
Okay.
If everything goes well. Um, that really needs to happen before we go back to Motorola and work out our contract negotiations with them because so much is dependent on what we can work out with the state.
State, okay.
Um, so it's probably a few months away before we, we're back.
Okay. Okay.
So what would you identify some of the biggest changes from the original plan, 2015, when we were looking in that direction?
I don't know that, um... I don't know that a whole lot has changed. I mean, we've still been on the same path. I mean, all along, we have wanted to go with a P-25 trunk system, and that's still the direction that we're going. It's just taken much longer to flesh out which vendor had the best solution for the city of Cape. So I think we've been on the same path all along, it's just being able to get to this point and finalize that decision.
You know, when we had the discussion back then, there were some, um, questions of trade-offs. Yeah, there's some systems that give you better penetration within buildings, some that give you better distance coverage interoperability. And so I know that was part of the discussion. Well, how did maybe some of those compromises turn out in this?
Well, I don't think that we made any compromises. I think that was the benefit of having Federal Engineering on our team was we were very specific in our request for proposals of the standard that we wanted to achieve. And so that was all spelled out very specifically. And, uh, that's something that we demanded from the proposals that we received. So I don't think that we were making any compromises. I think the biggest decision was whether or not we wanted to join the MoShwin system. Um, and I think that everyone on the team concurs that that is the best in terms of an operability, uh, solution for the city, um, as long as we can work out some of those issues that I mentioned with the state in terms of maintenance and upgrade costs and things like that.
That's the statewide network.
That's the statewide network. And that does provide the best solution for us in terms of interoperability and being able to talk to others in our area and statewide.
So there's been, you mentioned, uh, the hope to use some of our current systems as we're transitioning and probably will be a multi-phased implementation. What do you see as some of the logical phase approach to do this?
So we are looking at using, um, some of our same tower sites now, the Gorgonville site. Um, we'll still utilize that, however, the tower that's there has reached the end of its useful life. So we're, we'll be looking at replacing that tower. And there are approval processes that come along with that as well. Um, we're looking at using the North County site as well, which currently exists up there by the water tower. And then we're also been talking with the university about using their tower site. Um, so, um, those are some of the things that we have to get in place too. Agreement with the university for use of their infrastructure. That, uh, that will come after we get our agreements in place with the state and Motorola.
You don't see any obstacles?
No, the university has been great to work with and a willing partner.
Council, others?
Your Chief Blair and Ennis, have any comments they want to make on disadvantages that the route we're taking?
I don't see disadvantages.
Counsel, anyone else?
Oh, they'll all be happy when it's all over.
They'll all be happy when it's all over.
I think Molly will be the happiest.
And a few binders will disappear?
Yes.
So the discussion of cost is better delayed until?
Yes, it's premature at this time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Did flood?
Flood emergency.
Mr. Hashider, I believe, our emergency director.
Always nice to bring a disaster to the city council, right?
We didn't, we didn't have this on the agenda originally.
Sorry, you know, nor did we have this on our agenda last week. But with all the heavy rains that we've received in our area throughout the state, to the north of us, the Mississippi has once kind of is out of its banks again. So we are and are expected to be reaching, um, record levels again, very near 48.5 Thursday. And while I'd like to say this is just normal routine for us, it just seems like every time it does flood, there are some little differences to it. Um, in this particular case, you know, we're going up very, very quickly. Um, right now, again, scheduled within five days to drop all the way up to 48.5, and then probably within six days, drop below our flood, uh, flood level again, down to 32. So it's gonna be up and down. We are looking at the forecast, make sure that any other additional rain doesn't, uh, bring it up higher and then try to make another record, uh, record flood. Hopefully that will not occur. So what's occurring, um, I think Public Works, I'll bring Stan up here in a minute to bring up all the items that Public Works has to do. You know, it, I'd like to again, to say it's routine. However, you know, Public Works does do a great job on making sure that all the small items that have to take place in preparation, um, for any of these flood events to, to occur. Um, they're doing it and have already done it. So a lot of times it's in the background, no one's understanding all the items that they do do. Um, everybody sees the, um, the pedestrian gates close on our flood wall. And then after that, it's pretty well, um, over with at that point. So Stan, if you've got just a minute just to bring up us to speed on what Public Works has done?
Mark, the crest is Thursday now?
Thursday, I think we're gonna hit it probably in the PM Thursday afternoon, if I'm correct, so.
I may say, whether it's Thursday night or Friday morning.
Okay, Thursday night or Friday morning, right? Okay. And more rain forecast Wednesday?
Wednesday, I think we're expecting anywhere from maybe inch and a half, um, somewhere in that vicinity. But again, over a wide area.
That shouldn't.
The real impact, a lot of it, and Stan was talking about it earlier too, is that, you know, we've got some to our west that everybody's experienced, uh, Wapahala Lake, Clearwater, The Black, um, St. Francis. It's already out of their, their bank at this point, so. Going back to us, but you know, just as far as the area.
Yeah, okay.
They're, they're far worse than we are, and that water will go south of us. So it won't raise the Mississippi, thank goodness. And Memphis is gonna catch all that.
Yeah.
But we'll miss it. Uh, but as Mark said, we're expecting a crest at near-record levels later this week. Um, hopefully that doesn't change, but there is some more rain in the forecast. The way that looks right now, I wouldn't expect much of a change in the crest.
Yeah.
Uh, the water is so wide now, to raise that an inch takes an immense amount of water. And so, uh, hopefully we won't see a, an increase in the crest forecast. And as Mark said, we are fortunate that, uh, the forecast is showing a very quick rise, which we are observing. Uh, they're showing an even faster fall, which we hope to observe. And, uh, if that's the case, based on this forecast that came out at noon today, uh, by the 11th, we'll be back below flood stage. So we'll hope that that actually occurs that way, which keeps us, you know, a little over a week having to deal with this. So, uh, quick hitter. Uh, things that have happened, and Mark mentioned the, the routine, are, are, are normal things that everybody sees. We've closed the pedestrian gates, we've closed one of the railroad gates, we'll close the other one tomorrow. Uh, we've got the sand and sack bands, and it's easy for me to say, sand and sandbags up at Red Star. We've also got a, a pile of sand and sandbags down by the Red House there at William and Main. Uh, so those are available to the citizens to come fill up and, and use. There are volunteers at Red Star that have a, quite a pile already filled out for people to use. So we've taken those precautions. We'll have more sand if it's needed. Uh, we are trying to coordinate with Corps of Engineers to get more sandbags. We're not running low, but we're trying to coordinate with them to replenish what we're using. Uh, hopefully we can get that squared away shortly. Um, it seems like I'm forgetting something, what is it?
Uh, just as far as the North Star area, a lot of our citizens are up there, some are affected many, many times. There's very few sandbagging actually going on, uh, the Red Star Baptist Church is sandbagging already at this time, so.
And, uh, this is very, this is gonna be very, almost equivalent event to what happened in January of 16. So people still have that fresh in their minds. If, if they got water then, they can expect to get water this time. If they didn't get water then, they should be okay this time, uh, assuming nothing changes dramatically. So, uh, we, a flood that's near record stage is never a matter of course in routine, but this one doesn't seem to have any dramatic changes for us yet. And hopefully it won't, and we'll work through our normal processes, help people out as best we can. And hopefully by the next council meeting, we'll be back below flood stage and, and talking about other things.
You might talk a little bit about the wastewater treatment plant, the amount of, uh, millions of gallons that, uh, we treated, uh, over the weekend and, uh, and the very few sewer, uh, issues that we've had in homes.
We did see that, the, the rains, uh, wastewater plant, uh, had for a short period of time flow rates in excess of 50 million gallons a day. That doesn't mean 50 million went through that day, but it was at that flow rate. If it had stayed at that rate for 24 hours, it would have been 50 million. Um, and that would cause all kinds of problems because we can't carry it for that long. But we were running at very high flow rates through the plant. The, so the collection system through the center part of town, as is, has been known over the years to be a problem, uh, did back up, and we had, I think we're up to 16 or 17, uh, known basement backups, uh, where people had sewage back up into their home, which is a terrible thing to deal with. Thankfully, that's not 50 like it used to be, but still there were 16 in this event. Uh, most of those, I believe, were early yesterday. Uh, we responded as best we could. We got some bypass pumps set up, and we're ready if the rain Wednesday happened to cause another problem. We've got those pumps in place and, and can try and keep the system pumped down. Um, the plant performed very, very well, just with that much rainwater in the system. Uh, we had, the, the system got surcharged and caused some backups, which has caused some of our families, you know, cleaning up from that is not a pleasant thing. And so, but we did have that. Right now, as of yesterday afternoon at 4 o'clock, the system was back down pretty much to normal. Uh, once the rain quit, everything could catch up. But, uh, but we did have some very high flow rates through the plant over the weekend while these storms were coming, and the character of those storms was particularly problematic. To say that we had two and a half inches of rain Saturday doesn't sound dramatic. To know that we get that two and a half inches in about six hours is more dramatic, and that's what creates the problem, is that surge. So, uh, today, everything seems to be getting back to normal with the plant. Hopefully it'll stay that way, but we have had some homes with some problems.
What was the total rainfall here that you?
I believe it was over seven inches over the weekend.
Okay. Heard Jackson Mayor say this noon, they had, he had 11 inches.
And I believe just north and west of here did get more than we got here right on the river. The, some of the training effect of the, the storms was over into Jackson and then out farther west from here in Bolinger County.
Yeah.
So we didn't get quite as much as they did, thank goodness, for us.
How many homes are, uh, subject to sandbagging now at this point?
Alex, you went out today and kind of relooked at some of the homes that we did. Again, this is, you know, multiple departments, any... I haven't checked with Alan the specific number, but we did go out and check the home that we checked there in the last one.
And I think the last flood, January 16, there were around 30 structures that were actually impacted with water. Uh, there are probably more than that sandbagging to be protected, but, but I think it's on that order of structures that are vulnerable at this predicted river level.
Guess the next question is businesses.
Oh, well, I think that includes.
And so businesses, but how many, how many of those are businesses?
Uh, I don't know, do you know, Alex?
We've got a couple of them down South Spring, La Cruz area, that's kind of affected. Again, they're on the river, they know what's going on.
Yeah.
That sand company that's, uh, transporting sand.
Yeah, capital sand.
They're gonna be affected here, probably if not, um, today, tomorrow, they'll be affected. We have new business up in that North Star area, used to be the sand company. Um, they're doing some, uh, biking around some of their buildings.
Okay.
A lot of activity going on. Amory, a lot of business utility, you know, they're double checking their substation on South Spring Street.
Yeah.
So a lot of activity going on. Um, but again, I think, you know, businesses and homes, a lot of times when we get, uh, questions from the news media, especially the national news, you know, the news here locally is that there really is no news because of all the mitigation activities that I think, you know, our previous city councils have, have done. And I'll go all the way back to, you know, our flood wall.
Right.
Just think what we would be with our downtown if, if city council back in the early 50s, 60s did not approve that. And as well as, I think the Cape Le Corre, Walker Creek, they're doing an excellent job, as well as detention basin. Things that we don't look at, other than look at all the water that's flowing down. So, uh, you know, those are just, those are things that are really happening. So a lot of times about businesses, you know, the homes up in North Star or Red Star, you know, it, it would have been a fury of activity going on.
Yeah.
Had all the homes we had back in 93, and so the buyouts.
Right, yeah.
Well, a very good investment by the city of Cape Girardeau.
Counting just in my mind, the ones I can think of, a dozen of those, of those 30 would be businesses.
Okay.
And the rest would be, uh, homes, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Just other couple of things that, you know, um, as far as road closure, we will still have road closure. You know, some of them are very common, Northern Boulevard, um, Public Works has already put barricades in those areas. You have the Public Works and our, the Police Department, when water goes over those roads, we'll be covered up, so. Um, in addition to that, you know, locally, regionally, county, you know, we are in contact with Dick Knopf, Emergency Management Director for the county. Um, also regionally, Mark Winkler, um, representing SEMA, and we've actually had contact with, um, with SEMA also. Uh, National Guard, uh, came in today, and one of the Police Department's employees has switched uniforms from a patrol, I think he's a detective, isn't he now? Uh, actually went from detective, now he comes in as a National Guardman, which is kind of like a commercial that you see on TV, you know, he's there for us. So he was in, uh, just making contact. Region, um, we did get deployed, um, Fire Department was asked to mutilate, go all the way down to Donovan, Missouri. We've been down there a couple of times, but, uh, we were down there over the weekend, sunny specifically, for almost 12 hours. Um, affected a, a number of, uh, people that needed help in evacuation, including a 100-year-old lady. I shouldn't say it, she was 100 years old, which is, you know, astounding. Um, I'd like to reach that, that milestone. But, um, and we also then did a rescue where a gentleman was in a home, um, that he was up in a loft, and we truly feel with the additional forecast that nobody else was gonna be able to get to. Uh, so we do think that that truly was a, a good rescue for the department.
Good.
And that was in conjunction with Sykesden and Jackson, so we were deployed down there. I think we effectively, um, impacted probably eight to nine people down there. Doesn't sound a whole lot, but those eight to nine people were sure happy to see us.
Yeah. Received footage of that behind you there.
Uh, yeah, this is some of the teams, and I think that's her right there. Um, again, um, we actually had a helicopter out. Um, we were on the west side of 160, they closed that bridge on us, they would not let us cross it. Um, so to get anybody on the other side, we actually had to bring in, um, air assets. Um, and again, when we're talking about regional, um, resources, we were able to call. Those resources were deployed to our airport, and, you know, with the help of Bruce Loyd, they were put in our hangar. So these little things that continue to occur, you know, we affected someone all the way down to Donovan. So the good nature of Cape Girardeau, reaching out to other areas is, is really great, so.
Very good.
She was helicoptered over and put into an ambulance and transported that down to that.
Little commercial about MoShwin, uh, you used MoShwin while you were down there?
That's correct. Uh, MoShwin, we did not have cell service, and believe me, I get a little jittery when I don't have cell service. Um, but we were probably two miles from the Arkansas border. We're down in the current river, and, you know, no cell service, but we can use our radios and be able to talk back either to resources, um, at the regional command post, the state, and our go-back to fire station number one, and get approval to do something from Chief Ennis, just by the talk of our radios. So that does give some of our benefits by utilizing MoShwin. And other, um, agencies, um, in the region are also able to copy us and, uh, coordinate the responses.
Okay, other counsel, questions?
Since it hasn't been mentioned, I assume all the improvements north of Themis is working as planned.
North.
And flood wall.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
No hiccups.
No hiccups there. Uh, uh, there will be more of a test of that starting tomorrow. The water's just now getting up that high. Uh, but we're not expecting any problems, but we will be monitoring that starting tomorrow morning twice a day and then shifting to four times a day, just to make sure there aren't any, anything happening there that's unusual.
It's already come from conversations, someone said, well, you know, some of that stuff under the, under the wall is not in the great terms. Actually, you know, we've replaced a lot of that, so we should feel much better.
And the footings, uh, haven't been touched since they were put in, and they're much deeper. Some people have suggested, well, we dug up through there, that may have weakened some of it. We were anywhere near the bottom of the footing, so we're not concerned at all that that work has compromised something through that, that northern stretch. Uh, it actually should perform much better because the pipes have actually got room for the water to move now. So we're excited about that.
And we do know about the little leak at the seal, and we do know about the, the, the fine cracks that, that drip a little water. We know about all those, and they're not a problem.
All of the gates aren't watertight, they're closed, but they're not. And so if you see a little water squirting through, uh, not to get excited, it isn't about to cave in. Uh, those are, are, those occur every year, or every time it floods. Uh, the Main Street gate has a, a little water coming through Broadway and, and Themis. Both Themis had a pretty good squirt coming through today, we're working on that. But, um, but those aren't dramatic things. Uh, if somebody didn't know, could get excited, but those are normal.
We appreciate you not allowing us to become Venice along the Mississippi.
We are striving hard to make sure we don't have any newsworthy event here, so.
Well, um, thank you to you and Mark and, and everybody on the team for all the extra efforts. I know I found Stan and Stacy easily down at the boat dock yesterday afternoon when I was driving around, so. Extra hours, extra effort and extra concern, and, and that's great, we, we think, thank you for that.
Thank you for that on behalf of a whole lot of our workers, I will accept that, thanks.
Yep, and then, and be sure and, be sure and pass that along.
Certainly do that, thank you.
And also our thoughts and prayers to those who have suffered loss and, and are in harm's way uh, due to this, uh, due to this event.
Yeah.
Our thoughts and prayers with them, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone to peer report to council on any item that is not on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Anthony Piers. Uh, I'd like to know what the city gonna do for the people that had damage to their houses.
Okay, I think, um, I just got an email that, um, you've had some attention. Okay, I think I just got an email that you've had some attention today.
Yes, sir.
And what I'm seeing is, it's been, HR's forwarded it?
Yeah, forwarded to our insurance.
Insurance. To invest a claim, waiting for the sign, so it's in, it's in process. It's in process.
And we were able to get you a voucher for to stay next two nights.
One more night, they say.
Last night and tonight?
Yes.
Okay. And the last sentence there from HR was, continue to work with them and assist when we can do so, or we can do so. So again, unfortunate, but it is an event that happened, and we are working with it.
I would like to say, I went to his house, he came, and I went over and I looked, and it wasn't bad shit. Now, I couldn't, we couldn't get downstairs because of the danger of electricity. I also got a call from another lady, and I went to her house, and it was some bad shit. The drains on Henderson and Jefferson, I mean, where all the other drains, there's like three of them, all, there was four drains, but only three was working, and one that was directly in, on the side of his house, it was filled. The one on Hanover, I drove around, and it was filled. So the water wasn't able to move free like it should have been moving. We don't know if that is part of it, but I would like that sometime to come out and see what's wrong with the drains, because I get many calls about those drains, those two drains right there. Several people have contacted me. I only got a chance to go to a few of their homes, and it was bad, it was really bad. And they had to leave.
Now, that's on the stormwater side?
Stormwater side, yeah.
And you had stormwater get your house?
I had sewage. I had. Yes. It come up through my floors.
Yeah.
You're one of the 16.
You're one of the 16, 17 that had the backup, yeah.
And as I addressed to my supervisor and the foreman, I didn't get to talk to Steve Cook or Stan, it damaged all my city clothes. I told, Shelley was there, the fire department, everybody that was involved, they know that it damaged all my city clothes. So, you know, whenever I get some clothes, I can go back to work.
We'll take care of it.
We'll, we'll continue to work.
That's all I ask.
Okay. Thoughts with you? Anyone else on anything not on the agenda? Agenda, Scott?
All right, we have one presentation tonight, the local government week, 2017 proclamation. So I think I'm gonna be able to have the honor of receiving that for all of our employees, and you just heard the dedication of a guy who, who has a personal tragedy, but at the same time is worried about his obligation to the city. And that's the type of people we have worked for us, and so I'll be prepared to say a few words about that. But it's an honor to receive that on their behalf and to focus on, on local government week this week.
Well, I'll be honored to read it.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Then we have communications and reports. Council, what items do you have?
My list is long with the busy weekend.
It is a busy weekend.
Ties and tennies at the Sportsplex Thursday evening at 6:00 PM. How's the tickets, how's the sales going for the numbers? A hundred, okay. And then Saturday, open house, 11 to 2, with ribbon cutting at 11. That'll be a busy day, and Julia tells me the parking lot will be full, and the, and the Sportsplex will be full, and there's gonna be a lot of people be able to see it for the first time this weekend. My bike to work day is Friday morning at Osage, 6:45. Saturday, Gus Smacker at the basketball at Arena, I'll be participating in that, I mean, I'll be there.
Slam duck contest, I believe, you're there.
I spoke there just a little bit. And downtown, Main Street Block Party, Saturday, 11 to 2. As Main Street gets, gets opened, they're getting to final touches. They've been fortunate, the last couple rain events have been kind of on the weekend, so they were down there working hot and heavy on that intersection today. So that's 11 to 2. And the other thing on communications that I wanted to mention, I've been asked by the community foundation to add a council liaison to the community foundation, and I've asked Robbie Gard if he would do that as a, as they're wanting to strengthen, get more support around the community for, as we really work to strengthen our community foundation. So I'll ask for, ask for that, and any other, others that are interested in community We are really working hard with Judy Cantoni now, is our new, new director, replaced MoShWen. And really interested in that, that moving forward and, and building our funds there in the community foundation. Any comments from council on that? And that's my list.
Others?
None? Governor? I think I'm gonna be at First Friday Coffee Friday morning, and Victor Gunn is gonna cover the bike to work, bike to work, bike to work day. So appreciate that, thank you. Okay? All right.
Others? Thought we have two public hearings tonight. First one is a special use permit for a vehicle fueling station at 1320 Cape Rock. There's a fueling station there, this, they want to rebuild that. It's gonna be quite an upgrade, but a special use permit, you, you just can't grandfather in when you have, when you rebuild, you have to ask for another special use permit. So that's what they're, they're asking for tonight. And then.
Action item 17.
Action item 17. And then the second one is for rezoning property at 550 North Silver Springs. This is senior housing project, right at the end of Silver Springs, right next to the Rena Park, is on the other side of the ditch, and it takes in that, the land next year for an expansion, and then there's actually a, a lot on the backside that it's taking in and changing it from C2 to R4. So that would, that would allow for future expansion of senior housing there, which has been a really nice improvement.
That's Mako, and they've, they've really improved that, that area, and this is the next, next phase, yeah.
That's agenda item 18. And if you get comments, you can handle it however you'd like, Mayor. Our consent agenda tonight is, we have the permanent sewer easement for the Dollar Tree project, second, third reading of that. And then items five, six, seven, and eight are the necessary changes for, to implement the roundabout, one-way, the yield signs, speed limit, et cetera, on that roundabout in Independence and Gordonville, second, third reading of all those. Number nine is two-hour parking on Fountain Street, second, third reading of that. And then number 10 is the rezoning of the, the land for the Dollar Tree and Hobby Lobby property there, from C2 to a, to a planned development, second, third reading of that. Then we have resolutions, we have the subordination grant agreement for 921 Bloomfield Street. This is so the owner can refinance. When you refinance, then the grant payback would have been, would have moved up on the list the first. In order for her to refinance, she needs that to be, the bank one needs to be first, and so it just allows that to happen. Then number 12 is a resolution in support of the repeal of the prevailing wage law. And then number 13 is accepting of the improvements for the Dollar Tree property. Are there any items on this consent agenda that you'd like to remove or make comment If not, then we have the one item that we went ahead and removed because of desire to have some additional discussion on it, and that is number 14, which is the selection of Motorola Solutions for the radio interoperability contract. As Molly said earlier, this gives us the ability to have the negotiations with MoShWen, as well as if those are fruitful, then have the negotiations with Motorola to, for pricing and full program, and then bring that back to you for, for approval. So that will be an item that we'll talk about.
I appreciate the discussion, and I was, I asked for to come off the consent agenda because I thought it was worthy of special attention. Appreciate the background and the work of the staff on this. I've answered all my questions tonight, so I appreciate that.
Good.
And I think it's gonna be great for both fire and police to have interoperability and achieve everything they wanted and without compromise.
Very good. Then we have ordinances tonight. Number 15 is the placement of stop signs on some intersections that didn't previously have control given by sign subdivisions, and so those are in front of you for Camelback Road, Randall Drive, Sapphire Lane, and Cheetah Lane, the first reading of that. Number 16 is a, is a record plat, this takes one lot, makes it into two, for based investments there off of Bloomfield Road. It's right next to Candlewood Suites. There's a large lot there that goes from Candlewood Suites over to Bloomfield, and it splits that from one lot into two. Number 17 and 18 are the hearing, first reading of those ordinances. And then number 19 is a consideration of a taxi cab license application. This is an appeal by Mr. Geiger, who is appealing the turning down of that license. So I believe that's all.
Any discussion on that item?
Seventeen, I will be at seven.
Seventeen?
Yes.
Okay. You can so state. Okay, council, any other business to come before our study session? Once again, want to thank Mark and Stan and everyone for the report back and all the work that has been done and all that's facing you in the next few days. Appreciate it. All right, council, we are in need of a closed session tonight for legal action, litigation, and communication with our legal counsel on property transactions pursuant to rise statute 610021, one and two, if I could have a motion.
So much.
My gun, seconded by Guard. Those in favor, I?
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, we'll stand adjourned and reconvene at 7:00 PM.
Bye. I'm good, how are you?
Hi.
Eh, it's a thing.
So I love that you can pull that video up, that was pretty sweet. Just sitting there, and all of a sudden, I'm like, this is video of them rescuing people up here.
Well, it took me forever just to get this thing to load, and then finally, I guess I just dirt, who knows?
Very cool.
Yeah, it's a little texture.
Yeah, did they use their drone to do some of that stuff, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I thought that was snazzy.
Yeah.
He really likes doing videos.
See ya.
Good show, sir.
By doing this job, I think you understand that you're basically on the frontline of helping anybody at any time, could be pushing a corner, intersection installed, to someone that's possibly having a heart attack, and you're there to get them to the hospital and get them properly. There's so many different other skills that have popped up over the years, the firefighters have adapted to, and it's, it's exciting to go out there and be able to help, and then come back here and feel good about actually helping somebody, making a difference in their day.
After every shift, we are able to go home the next day and have the satisfaction that we impacted someone's life in a possible way. It's a wonderful opportunity to really see what it is that you're making.
It's almost wonderful to me now that my crew is doing a good job, which they do, community sees that.
Like it.
Responds by.
Cool, thank you for that.
Just compliments when they see us, or, you know, you just did a good job, or the chief telling us that we've done a good job, that, that means a lot to me. So who's gonna do what? I'll pack the dead batteries. Great.
I'll only put what I don't need into a duffel bag.
Perfect, that's totally unhelpful.
No problem. Meanwhile, I will try to comfort everyone by speaking in a cool voice. And choose when you have supplies.
I can forget to do this.
Thanks, Tim.
Gee, what's happening?
Same old, same old.
Same old stuff?
Yeah, little, little wetter.
Talk to your kid about the recall.
Yeah, we've had enough of the rain already.